Good evening, and thanks for your patience. I know we're running a little bit late. Hopefully, we'll be able to catch up some of the time. I have had the pleasure of sitting down with Chase and Susan on this presentation, and so I think people will find your recommendations very interesting. So please go ahead and get started. Are you going to start, James?
Sure, and good evening. Thank you. We're happy to be back. Tonight is a continuation of the session we had in early May. It's a follow-up, and we're pleased to be joined by Aon this evening. And so I'm going to turn it over to Jean, but as I said, we're joined by Alkaram Aladini-Dina from Aon, who's been a great help to us on this process. And so that, turn it over to Jean.
Thank you, Dr. Amy. As Dr. Amy said, we did present the results of the retirement security study at the May 12th work session, and the school board asked that Aon return to answer questions on the results of the retirement security study. There wasn't time for a Q and A that evening. That study benchmarked the FCP retirement benefit levels to surrounding jurisdictions, to Fairfax County and to the federal government. And in addition to being able to ask questions on that study, the school board also asked Aon to analyze the impact of possible changes to ERFC on the retirement benefit levels provided by Fairfax County Public Schools, and also the impact on the cost. So Mr. Aladini is going to go over the impact of those changes on the benefits tonight, and I'm going to follow with the impact on the costs.
Good evening. I hope you can hear me. Great. So thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and share some thoughts with you. I thought it might be helpful to do just a quick reminder of the study that was started and discussed on May 12th. So just one thing that Jean already spoke about, but I just want to make sure I emphasize a little bit that this, what I'm about to present, is a comparison of benefits, not a cost comparison at all. We need to be cautious about that. So if I can just use an example that I'd used last time to describe it, that if you had a pension benefit that was based on 1% of pay for every year of service, and you compared that to a pension benefit that was based on 1.2% of pay for every year of service, you would expect that that second benefit would be 20% higher. That doesn't necessarily mean that the cost is going to be 20% higher, because the cost is dependent on multiple different factors. It's dependent on what are the demographics of those plans, what are the assumptions that are being used, and we saw a lot of the volatility on what happens with assumptions. It also is reflective of what has been the historical plans and the funding that has been done historically. Yeah? That's why I wanted to make sure I emphasize that we're here talking about the benefits and comparing benefits across different jurisdictions. So if I took the same set of employees, exactly same pay, same age, same service, and I run them through the different benefit packages that are offered at the different jurisdictions, what do the benefits look like? Okay? That's one. The second is sort of the findings that we had from the last time, and then from which we are now working from today. So the first thing that we had in the study that was presented on May 12th was the fact that, you know, the Fairfax County Public School benefits were lower than the benefits provided to Fairfax County General Employees. So that was just a general finding. The other finding was the fact that the Fairfax County Public School benefits were higher than the other jurisdictions, except for the District of Columbia Public Schools. Okay? So that was the other finding. Third was the fact that the employee contributions, which Jean referred to last time, sorry, in the previous presentation, the minimum contributions that are required by a Fairfax County Public School employee are 8% of pay when you combine everything that they have to contribute to. Those were higher than anyone else, except for the District of Columbia, and the District of Columbia actually also has an 8% contribution requirement. Okay? So that's an important fact to keep in mind, because at the end of the day, when we look at benefits, we have to also look at who's paying for those benefits, right? And that's because that's going to determine whether there's any cost savings in terms of changes that are made. Yeah? And then the last finding we had was the fact that these benefits that we're talking about provided higher benefits when you had a full career. But if you retired early, or if you had a short career, you did not receive benefits that were as high. As a matter of fact, you probably had to maximize your contributions beyond the 8% to get meaningful benefits from an adequacy perspective for retirement purposes. So these are just findings from the last time that I just wanted to make sure I shared with everyone, so that we're kind of working from the same page, right? And then there was a discussion about, okay, if we made some modifications, and there were some suggested modifications, what would these benefits look like? And so that's what we're going to talk about next. Okay? All right, so if we could flip, please, to Slide 1. So what we're looking at is making two changes. Okay? The first change is in the definition of compensation that is used for the ERFC benefit. The VRS benefit, right now, is based on looking at a person's last five years of pay, the average of that. The ERFC benefit was based on looking at the person's last three years of pay, and the average of that. Pay generally goes up, so the last three, if you just look at the last three, is generally higher than if you look at the five. So the first thing was, what would happen if we also used five-year average for the ERFC benefit? Okay? The second is that all the benefits for all the jurisdictions, including, and the supplement for ERFC, provide a cost of living adjustment during retirement. Okay? And so right now, the ERFC cost of living adjustment is 3% per year in the retirement period. And so there was a discussion about what would happen if we changed that definition to be 100% of what the CPI changes capped at 4%. Okay? Now, the 4% is obviously, you think, is higher than the 3%, so why would we do that? That's the cap, right? So we have to look at what would CPI look like over the next few years. So we have to make some assumptions. So we've made two assumptions here. One is looking at a 25-year historical average of the CPI, and assuming that that's what it's going to be in the future. And the second assumption is if we just used a flat 1.5% assumption of what the cost of living would be like in the future. Okay? The actual increase in the benefit is going to be dependent on whatever the cost of living adjustment is. But we needed some benchmark to be able to tell how to do that. Okay? All right. If we go to Slide 2, we're not going to spend time on this. It is just simply intended, and it's in your material, it's intended to simply illustrate what the 25-year average looks like. And if we applied the rules for each of the different jurisdictions in calculating what the cost of living adjustment assumption would be, it's stipulated here. In the case of the Fairfax County Public Schools, under this assumption, the 25-year average assumption, we would be assuming future cost of living increases of 2.37%. Okay? All right? And under the VRS is 2.06. These two pieces matter, right? As do the other jurisdictions, but primarily those two, because they impact the discussion. All right. If we go to Slide 3, we looked at, in the report that you have from May 12th, there are multiple different examples that we've used. But for this discussion and the analysis that's been done this time, we've limited it to just two hypothetical participants. The first is someone who is aged 60 with 30 years of service at retirement. You pick this person because they have 90 H-plus service points. 60 plus 30 equals 90. 90 H-plus service points means you have an opportunity to receive an un-reduced normal retirement benefit under VRS. Okay? So that's an important one to pick. They're not Social Security benefit eligible yet, but they can get the full benefits under the VRS plan. Okay? The second is reflective of the stats that Jean shared in the last presentation, which is what's the ongoing sort of retirement age in service of participants? And if the legacy ERFC slide that Jean had shared on the demographics, you saw it was 62 years of age and about 22 years of service. So that's the second person that we've used here. We don't have many retirees who are coming through the ERFC 2001 plan, so we use that as a benchmark for now. The patterns may be different for the new plan, as Jean was mentioning. They seem to be older, at least. I don't know about service. Yeah? All right. If we then go to Slide 4, what I wanted to do is slowly walk you through the calculation. So I had walked you guys, for those that were present last time, last time through this. It was 10 o'clock at night, so I don't know how many, if you remember. If you remember, that's when the students were talking about having to go home and do math homework. So I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to walk you through the calculation here. Okay? Because I think this is critically important. If you understand the calculation, then you understand all the nuances, and you can understand the implications that can happen. All right? So if I start with this slide, you know, this is purely focused on an FCPS employee. There are two pieces of benefits that they're entitled to. One is under VRS, and the other is under the ERFC. So let's look at VRS first. And we're going to say this person is 60 years of age with 30 years of service, so they've had a full career. We've looked at your salary scale. So the final salary that this person has is $97,791. Okay? It's a five-year average, so that's, 97 is the last one, so you back it down for the remaining four years. You find what's the average? The average is $91,607 for the last five years for this person. Okay? What the VRS plan says is you get 1% of your final average pay for every year of service. So in this particular case, the person has 30 years of service, they get 1% for every year, 30% of the $91,607, their annual pension benefit, just VRS, $27,482. Okay? I'm going to stop there and go to the right, then I'll come back to the value conversation. Okay? So what do they get under the ERFC? Well, the ERFC starts with the same final salary, but it's a three-year average rather than a five. We talked about the fact that pay goes up, so the three-year average is $94,970, slightly higher. And the ERFC benefit is 0.8% of pay per year of service. All right? So this person, 30 years of service, 0.8% per year, it's basically 24% of that $94,970 number, or amounts to $22,793. So this person, before you do anything, in total, just from, they get $59,000, almost, in a pension benefit. Okay? Now, the total combined value currently, I just want to make sure I clarify this one here, we've skipped one step. See, the VRS has this hybrid plan where you put money into a defined contribution plan, and you get a benefit. You're required to put in a minimum of 1% of pay, you get a matching 1% contribution. You can go higher, you can put up to 4% of pay in addition, and get matching contributions on that. So the $57,572 number that's there includes what they would get for putting in the 1% of pay and getting that 1% match. Okay? All right. So then, before we go any further, let's talk about how do you convert this to value? What's this worth to a person? So the first thing we said is, okay, if you're going to get the, back to my first column, $27,482, if I want to pay someone that benefit starting when they're 60 years old, I need a certain part of money to be able to pay that. The assumption that we have is that we're going to earn 7.25% return on our assets. So basically, what this is saying is that if I had $374,974 in my trust fund, earning 7.25% in the future, I could pay that $27,482. Okay? Now, I'm using a simplistic approach to the 7.25% because the 7.25% is adjusted for the cost of living increases that the person gets. Okay? So in this particular case, it's not really, the benefit is, you know, the additional 3%. This benefit is going to go up by 3% every year, and that has been factored into this $374,000 figure. Okay? All right? But this benefit is not entirely paid for by VRS. It's split, right? So then we said, an employee is required to put in 4% of pay every year. So how much is that worth? If that person put in 4% for 30 years, and the fund earned 7.25% on that 4%, what's that worth? Well, that's worth $166,421. So in reality, even though the total value of this benefit is $374,974, the employer-provided value is $208,000. Okay? So it's important to understand that distinction. And then similar calculation for the ERFC piece. Same thing, except in the ERFC, the person's required to put in 3% of pay for 30 years. Okay? And if I continue to go to the right, and I stay at the value of benefits line, you see that the total value of $777,000 now includes the defined contribution, what we talked about. You put 1% in, you get a matching 1%. I will tell you that in order to develop that value, we have assumed that the money that goes into the defined contribution plan earns 7% per year, compounded annually. I know Brexit put a challenge on that. But I'm teasing. It's a very good question you asked about, because there's huge implications. But I just want to make sure that there's a clarity that we've assumed that there's a 7% return here in achieving that over the 30-year period, every year. Okay? And so before we go on and look at what the modifications provide, we talked about the fact that the participant has the option to maximize their retirement benefits by putting in their, an additional 4% of their own money, and getting some additional matching contributions on that 4%. And so at the bottom, the last two rows, what you see are what happens when the person, instead of putting in just 8% of their pay, actually puts in 12% of pay. Right? So sometimes, and I will focus on this line, the third column, under the value of benefits that says it's $1,038,000 is what the participant gets. When you say $1 million, that's a massively large number. Obviously, everybody quickly looks up and says, what's going on? But if you look at that, you notice that $492,000 of that money is really coming from the employee's own contribution, the 12% that they're paying into different groups, right? So again, I stress that because it's important to understand that these are important components of a benefit that's understood, and that the employer-provided value is $547,000. If I sort of did a ratio percentage-wise, about 53% is being paid by the employer, 47% is being paid for by the employee. Okay? All right. So if I then continue to the right, the first change we wanted to make is change the definition from three years to five years on the ERFC benefit. Okay? So the column 4 says, how does the total benefit change if I change it from three years to five years? And you see, instead of $57,572, you get a value of annual benefit of $56,765, slightly less. Because now, in simplistic terms, what it is, is it's 54% of the $91,607, because that's all we've done. We've just changed the final average definition to be the same for everybody. Sure. So if you take, now, instead of using the $94,970 in the final calculation, I'm just using the $91,607, the person, in essence, is getting 1.8% of pay per year of service, 1% VRS, 0.8 ERFC, 30 years, 54%. That's what I was saying. Yeah? Okay? On the 54%, if you just look at, like, you know how I did the 1%, 30 years of service, that's 30%, and then another 0.8% from ERFC, 0.8 times 30 years is another 24%. Yeah? Excellent. No worries. So then, the total value, okay? If you look at that line, when the person's only putting in 8%, and I shouldn't say only, because that's a lot, is $766,000. So it used to be $777,000, now the value is $766,000. The person's lost about $11,000 in value. Now, the interesting thing is that the amount of money that the employee pays doesn't change, because you're still paying 3%. So that $11,000, basically, is how much less the employer is paying. And you'll see that pattern, right? If I go one more over, now we're saying, not just changing the definition of the five-year average pay, I'm also now going to change the cost of living adjustment I'm going to make. And that second to the right column is speaking to that 25-year average, the 2.37%. If I make that change, because I've taken it down from 3%, I now have reduced the total value from $777,780 to $728,039. Right? So roughly about $50,000 reduction. Again, that reduction comes, a reduction in the value of the cost that the employer bears. No, the 3% cost of living adjustment is down to 2.37% now, okay? Using the 25-year average. Okay? And I'll continue to go to the extreme right. Instead of 2.37% as the cost of living, I'm now going to use only just 1.5%. I'm going to assume future cost of living increases are only 1.5%. In that case, the value drops from $777,000 to $687,000, roughly about a $90,000 value drop. Again, just a direct reduction in the cost that the employer bears. Okay? So that's sort of the math. Okay? Sorry. Have I lost you?
I think I missed one very important explanation, that third column, value of benefits, $777,780.
Yeah?
Now, this is a dumb question, because I missed the explanation. Could you tell me why there is not the sum of the first two column numbers?
Yeah. The reason is because the column that's missing there is the VRS defined contribution plan savings, right? That I've not included in there.
Yeah, you explained that.
Yeah, sorry. Just to create space, we sort of compressed it a little bit, so apologies for that, right? But there's another, you know, about $40,000 of value in that that's not shown there. Okay? Yeah? And so, again, we do the extreme right, we talked about it. I'd just like to point out to you that if you look on that extreme right-hand column, and you go to the bottom where the person's putting in 12%, if they're trying to maximize their benefit in this situation, that $1,038,000 now has dropped to $948,000, I'm rounding here, but the participant is paying the majority of that now. Now they're paying, you know, a higher percentage than the employer. Just something to keep in mind. Okay? Sorry, yes.
No, sorry, clarifying questions. I'm just trying to follow, at the 8% level, the way it is currently, seems to be $90,000 difference in the total value.
Yeah.
But I'm trying to read, so, but the yearly, the annual benefit, not counting VRS, is only about $800 difference?
Yeah, that's because it's, what you're seeing there is the $56,765 is the first-year benefit. It doesn't show you all the future COLA increases, right? And you would see, if we showed the full, like, if I did a chart of the pattern, you'd see like this.
Okay.
Okay? But we just haven't done that.
Is there a way, so it's just that every year would be about 3%?
Yeah, so just think about the fact that that $57,572, I'm going to ignore that there's a defined contribution piece, just increase that by 3% every year, compared to the $56,765, increasing by just 1.5% every year.
And that's where we get the huge gap.
That's where you're going to get the huge $90,000 difference, because it's going to go like this on a chart.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. All right.
Karen, if I might, Susan or Kristen, at one point, you knew the percent of our employees that actually are contributing the full amount statewide, and I think I remember the number, but I want you to tell us, because there's so much money our employees have to pay out of pocket. It's this, plus healthcare, Social Security, everything going on, but how many, do you remember what percentage or approximately?
In Fairfax County system, only 7% are putting in the maximum. It's a little bit higher statewide, it's 15%. But in FCPS, it's only 7% that are putting in, and so all the rest are missing out on that match, leaving dollars on the table.
Yes, on the hybrid model of VRS. That's correct.
Can I suggest that we go ahead and ask if there are any additional questions on this chart before we allow you all to go on? Let me make it easier.
The next charts really just illustrate this table and how it compares to the other jurisdictions. So yes, I think taking questions now would be very good, so that we have a solid understanding of how this is laid out.
Excellent, thank you.
So I'm afraid I'm not understanding why in the far-right column with assumption B, why the number is less than the assumption on A. Assumption A is the minimum amount only, and assumption B is the amount needed to maximize any employer-matching contributions? Are those the assumptions?
No, it's the other way around.
Oh, okay, because on this page, it says A is...
Okay, so assumption A, so, if I may stand up, sorry.
Of course, yeah.
This is reflecting 8% employee, sorry, thank you. Okay, so that's reflecting 8% employee contribution in total.
Right.
And a cost of living adjustment every year of 2.37%.
All right.
If I go one over, that is still reflecting an 8% employee contribution, but a cost of living increase of only 1.5%.
Okay, I was looking at different assumptions.
Then if you look at the bottom, is where the 12% comparison is.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Schultz, please.
So I just have a quick follow-up, because I tend to remember a figure, too, but I don't want to repeat it. And so 7% is the number of employees that are maximizing their contribution. How many aren't adding anything additional at all?
Majority, almost 93%. It's either they're putting in the minimum, or they're putting in the max. There's really nobody in between.
Well, that's, I mean, 7% putting in the maximum is not the same as saying 93% are putting in nothing at all, and that...
The minimum, the 1% is required.
Well, okay, so, but nobody's escalating, nobody, like, escalates between, they either just do the minimum...
There is an auto escalation feature in the plan, and so that 1% is going to go up to 1 and 1/2 in January, so...
Yeah, but what I mean is, is that quite often in benefits, people can choose, you know, like a cafe style, well, this year, I'm going to bump up from 1 to 2, and next year, I'm going to bump up from 2 to 3. But what we're finding out is that they're not, either, and I recall last time having a conversation, that, to me, it was a communications thing, about, well, everybody's just chucking in the minimum, and if we had the ability to offer that differential chart of, well, if you went from 1 to 2, and if you went from 2 to 3, you know, to show them what the difference would be, it's, you know, I mean, people are, most people are visual, and if you showed them, look, this is what, where the difference is, then we may up that participation rate, which I think would change a lot of assumptions, because you'd have a lot...
I agree, and I would say VRS is doing a very good job on communication of that fact, and they have the flexibility. They're mailing postcards to their home every quarter, they're saying, this is your opportunity to up your contribution rate.
So maybe you're doing a very good job of communicating, whatever the communication is, isn't effective, because 93% is non-effective. So I'm hoping...
I think it's a function of people really just don't want to, I mean, it's hard for them to have more taken out of their check than they already are paying out. I think that's probably a factor.
Ms. Wilson, go ahead. I was simply going to comment that beyond the 8%, they probably have to pay their FICA, which is another almost 8%, so they already got 16% out of their paycheck that's already coming out, and their health benefits beyond that, and so on, so may not have that capacity possibly. Sorry.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. My questions, actually, I hope they weren't covered at the presentation at 10 o'clock, which it's quite possible they were, and I wasn't paying attention, because I sort of devolve as the evening wears on. But the assumptions that we're covering now assume very low interest rates, which is, of course, the historic, we've had historically low interest rates for quite a while now. Can you talk about what happens in a high inflation context, just in general terms, what would happen in our plan?
So, sorry, I just want to make sure I understand the question, because, so the interest rate assumption that you're using today is still 7.25% to value the obligations of the pension plan.
Yeah.
It's just the cost, the inflation assumption is different.
Yeah, really, the cost, both, actually. The cost of living adjustment seems to be quite low.
Yes.
And the return number of 7% looking at the, from the last presentation, seems perhaps even a little high. But, I mean, I think that if you go back farther in history, there are more prolonged periods of high inflation.
Yeah.
And so what, I just am trying to understand that there's not the option, that you have presented something that would say, what if, what if we're at a, you know, 7% or 8% annual cost of living increases? How does that change our numbers?
There are caps on those cost of livings, so that would help in that instance. So this is, this proposal is a 4% cap, and the current COLA in ERFC is a fixed 3%. So in a 7% or 8% inflationary environment, you still would have these increases capped. It would, of course, have an impact on your investment returns.
So really, when you say, when you say that what that means is that our fund would actually grow, we would have an increase in the total value of the fund, because what we'd be paying out would be capped, but our returns presumably would also be higher.
Yeah, so the nominal, you're saying, so just to make sure that I use a numeric example to maybe say what you're saying. If you're saying that inflation is 5% hypothetically, the participant's only going to get up to a 3% increase in their benefit, but the nominal return that you earn on your investments will be at least 2% higher, right? So in nominal terms, the fund will grow faster, but in real dollars, right?
Yeah, so... Yeah, so, so is there anything in the plan that, that protects retirees in that context? Because obviously their cost of living is gonna be jumping up at higher rates than the cost of living adjustment cap?
There, there's, and, there's no rollover. In other words, like if you have, let's say you had 2% inflation in the one year, the participant's only gonna get that, well, they're gonna get 3. But if it was 5 the next year, it's not that, that 2% that's above the cap will be rolled over and paid at some point in the future, if that's what you're asking, not that I'm aware of. So there's none of that additional protection. So the value just diminishes, the purchasing power goes down.
So, and, and just, what, and based on your experience, what do you think our risk is of entering into a high inflation period?
The Society of Actuaries would want me to tell you I'm not an investment advisor.
Don't worry, I don't get paid enough to have any investments.
Look, the, uh, you know, if I, in, in, so the, the investment, so even in our firm, even in our firm, the, the investment arm of our firm and the, when they look at capital market assumptions, long-term, 20, 25 years, they're still looking at 2, 2.25 as an inflation outlook. I mean, I don't know what will happen long-term, but that's, at least right now, even with, with some of the things that are going on, that part has not yet changed. I mean, I think there's a belief that interest rates will be low for a little bit longer than anticipated, but the inflation outlook, at least, I'm not aware of there being a change in some of that.
Okay.
That helps.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Huff, please.
Thank you. So, on this chart, the total combined value current, um, includes, well, that's okay, includes the defined benefits, VRS and ERFC combined, plus, um, if they contributed, I'm assuming that range is from the 1% to the 4%? Is that from the 1% to 4% in both? Be correct? But is that just in VRS, or is that ERFC also?
Yeah, there, there's not, there's no component in ERFC that allows you to do that.
1% DC up to 4%.
So ERFC is a mandatory what, or it's just 0.8% from employees?
It's a mandatory 3% contribution.
Sorry, I missed that, okay.
And the multiplier is fixed at 0.8, so there's no ability to put more money into ERFC.
Okay, so that, that range is the 4% plus the 8%. Okay. So, I guess my question is, and I'm fine to table it till we're done with the chart, but something to think about as we go through is why are we even doing a supplemental option when 93% only give 1% of their current salary? Why not just let them have that flexibility to put in up to 4% in the VRS? Instead, we're giving them two options, and one they're only using by a fraction, and then we're giving them another option where they have to put in more money, so um, I understand we probably want to save that till the end of the presentation.
Can I, you want me to comment on that? Yeah? So, so, the one, if you, the 4% is voluntary, right? So if I don't put the money in, I'm not gonna get the benefit. What the ERFC does is it, yeah, it forces you to put the 3, but it also gives you a, a defined benefit pension, which is much more secure, and it'll probably, you're not paying the full value of it, because it's a split cost, right?
Right, but the, the comment by Dr. Garza that I understood was that the reason they're stopping at the 1% is because they don't want more of that cash taken from them, from their take-home check, and basically, we're requiring that with this supplemental in terms of the 3% versus giving them the option of how much they end up wanting to, to put in, so, anyway.
So, yes, you just run the risk of, if you, if you, and I'm not saying you should, you can do that with, with future, with future hires, but you run the risk that they will actually only put in the 4% that's required for the VRS, the 5%, sorry, for the VRS, the 4% in the defined benefit pension, and the 1% in the VRS mandatory ERFC, and not put anything else in. So in essence, the participant will just get a lower benefit, long-term.
Correct, but, I mean, that's what we're doing, I mean, that's what most private, actually, every private company is doing, right? They run that risk with their employees.
I think the other key item to kind of keep in mind as we go through the chart is where do we, or the board, would like to see the income adequacy, the retirement adequacy of our employees, right? Because that's what's gonna drive whether or not you move that additional 3% as an optional plan or keep the ERFC mandatory. Because this number right here, you're gonna have from last presentation from May 12, show that that income adequacy is really below where it should be. So by, I think, converting it to a DC plan rather than keeping it as a DB, that will further, I think, show a decline in that replacement income ratio for employees. So that's kind of something to keep in mind as we kind of go through the charts.
Sally.
Thank you. Um, I've been trying to go back, I, I sat through when the county did their LOBS and looked at their retirement plans, and can't seem to find the presentation again. Um, I don't know if you could compare, I, I believe we've already gotten rid of an additional gap benefit that the county still has. We got rid of that a long time ago, the pre-social security benefit.
Actually, there's still, the, the social security benefit is still there.
For us or for the county?
For the county.
For the county.
Right, they still have it, right?
Yeah, the, yeah, the, sorry, VRS and ERFC do not have. So what you're referring to is if I, if I retire at age 60,
Right.
I just get whatever my benefits are. But if under the county, if I retire at age 60, I get an additional benefit until I'm social security retirement eligible.
I just wanted to clarify, I couldn't find it in their documents, so I remember hearing that.
But you're right, it's not in, in...
Okay, and we don't do that.
Yeah.
Right, and so I'm wondering, I don't know if this is the time, but if you are able to give, I know we like to compare with the county.
Can I suggest we actually
The next chart.
start talking about that
Thank you.
in the next.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, if we then go, move forward to the next slide on page 5. This is basically a comparison of the values across the very, compared to what the um, FCPS employees are compared to the rest of the jurisdictions, the federal government and Fairfax County government. There are two plans for the Fairfax County government, Plan C and Plan D, but these are the only two that are open, right? And, uh, the, the Plan D is a richer plan, but it requires slightly higher contributions, but not as high as what, uh, FCPS requires. So just as a point of reference, the Fairfax County government plans require a 4% employee contribution for, uh, Plan C, and I think about 5.3 when it comes to Plan D. So you can compare that relatively to the 8% that's required, okay? In terms of benefits, you notice this is what I was referring to before, is our finding, right? Is that the benefits, uh, are, are higher than for FCPS employees, okay? And for FCPS employees, they are higher than the other school jurisdictions except for the district Columbia Public Schools. But, as I said, there's an 8% contribution there that has to be kept in mind. Okay? So again, this chart is intended to demonstrate where you stack up. Just making these changes, uh, of, you know, in this particular, uh, change, we're talking about using that 2.3% COLA, 3.7% COLA, and, but the person's still making only the 8% contribution. The pattern that we had seen last time doesn't really change much. It's a slight change, but nothing a meaningful change, as you can appreciate, right? The total value difference, as I said, was only about, you know, $50,000. So you don't expect much of a difference. Sorry. If we keep going, uh, you see the pattern, this is the pattern, if you were to put in the maximum, same individual on slide 6, 60 years of age with 30 years of service, but now this person's been putting in 12% of their pay for the full 30-year period. Right, they end up with the highest benefit, but, as we talked about before, they're predominantly paid for that higher value of the benefit, right? So the yellow piece and the light blue piece are what are the pieces that the employee has paid for. Okay? Yellow and red. Sorry, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. On the next one, on, uh, slide 7, okay? Here, we're looking at the same, again, retiree, 60 years of age with 30 years of service, but this time, instead of the 2.37% COLA, we're using the 1.5% COLA. So what happens is that the numbers, values just come down. Pattern's still the same, but the values just come down. Okay? So, we're on slide, did I miss slide? Slide 7? Am I on 6? We're on 7. Sorry. I'm going a little bit faster than this, so you can slow me down if you want. Yeah? Have I got the wrong sequence? The, uh, slide 8. This is that person, again, same maximum contributions, okay? We're using a 1.5% COLA, okay? And they're 60 years of age with 30 years of service. Again, same pattern as what you saw before. Only reason that now you're, the Fairfax County Public Schools, the highest in bar in this whole chart, is because of the fact that they're paying more. Yeah? And remember, this is the one where I showed you on when I was looking at the calculations, that and actually in this one, it's flipped around, where the employee now is paying 52% of the total cost, and the employer's paying 48% uh, because of the way, it's because the COLA's come down. Okay? All right. Do you want to skip retiree 2 in the essence of time, or?
Yeah.
Yeah? Want to do that? So then, if we were to flip to, the next four slides were with the second example, but we'll skip that and go to slide 13. This is what Susan was getting at in terms of income adequacy. So we also, in the study, not just looked at comparative benefits, but we also looked at what would be an adequate retirement benefit, or a pay replacement. And we looked at a, a study which suggested that if someone was earning $90,000, roughly 78% replacement of pay would give them a, an adequate retirement benefit. So if we then look at the examples that we have here, okay? If you look at the first one, and if you are maximizing your contributions for the 60-year-old with 30 years of service, this is putting in 12% of pay, your pay replacement ratio at age 60 is about 83%. So above the requirement. Remember, social security is not payable yet. Okay, so social security is payable when you're 62, and social security adds another about 24% of pay. So for that person, when they turn 62, if they've been maximizing, they're, they're earning more than 100% of their pay. But that's because they've paid quite a bit of money into it. Right, for 30 years, and, and earned 7% return on that money. Yeah? If we were to look at instead the person who can only put in 8%, which is what we're seeing now, as we talked about, right? At 60, sorry, at age 60, they're only getting 59% pay replacement. This is after the mandatory requirement of the 8%. Yeah? And even, and, and so they basically probably, when they get to 62, is when they get above that 78% threshold. Because social security now kicks in, they get another about 24% of pay, so that's, takes their total pay replacement from 59% to 83%.
With 7% return.
With a 7% return, yes, all the same. Um, I have not, we didn't talk about retiree number 2, but retiree number 2 was the one who was 62 with 22 years of service, and you noticed that at age 62, that person is, even with social, now social security's kicked in. And even then, the pay replacement ratio is really low, because at 62 and 22, they have a significant reduction in their VRS benefit. They're not eligible for 90 points, so they're not eligible for the, for that benefit at, at un-reduced. So it behooves that person to wait until they at least another three years when they have 90 points. So you might see such a pattern that people stay a little longer rather than leaving, and which is what you're seeing anyway, right? You're seeing them stay a little bit longer. Okay? On slide 14, sorry, yes.
Let's let people ask a few questions about that slide, if possible.
Yeah, and then the next 14 and 15 are tied to that, just show information relative to other.
So Mrs. Hines, please.
Thank you, I'm sorry, this probably should be obvious, but, um, this is VRS plus ERFC, right? This, okay, and so, if we didn't have ERFC, but could we figure out what this would be without ERFC? I mean, would we just go back?
Yeah, you can, I can go back, and you can just, that chart that I showed you before, if you just, on the next page, yes, thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
We can just flip to the next page and you can see it, right? So in this particular case, if you look at the green, right? Right, the VRS is 28%, the DB is 23, so if you eliminate that ERFC piece on the, on, on the green bar from the 59%, right, that person would have, uh, 36% pay replacement before social security. Social security would add another 24% at age 62, right, so they would get to about 60% pay replacement at age 62.
Ms. Huff. I think I had the exact question, but I want to make sure. Um, the green bar, if they only did VRS, is that them contributing 7%?
5%.
So, what I would be curious to know is if they did the mandatory 4 plus the 3 they're being required to do in ERFC, so if they did, because they could...
Yeah, so you can, so if you look at, so look at the maximum here, and you see that under the DC column? Sorry. 32% there? So that is the, the 1% plus the additional 4, right? You know the 1% is worth 7%. Okay? Right, so basically, in other words, in simplistic terms, if they, if you eliminated ERFC, you take away the 23%, but they somehow put in the 4% on their own to maximize, they'd get 32%. So you'd have 28 plus 32, right, which would be 60? Right? 60% before age 62, and at age 62, you would add in another 24% to get to 84. But that would mean that they would have to put in the full 5%.
Okay.
Right, not 12, 5, right? And then, they would have to earn 7% compounded every year. Okay?
Mr. Wilson and then Ms. Evans.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. Um, the question I have is about the assumption of 78% of, of final earnings as being the retirement adequacy.
Yeah.
Can you just discuss how that number is generated? I know, I know you said, it says studies, but just explain that a little bit, because I guess what, what is somewhat surprising to me is to see the federal government uh, down at the very bottom, 33%. Uh, so you would think, oh, well, they've got the worst retirement benefit of all. Uh, and I'm just trying to, trying to square that with what, um, you know, my experience with, with my family members who are government employees and retired, and, and trying to understand how that works. What does the 78% mean? And so that we can better understand what the 59% means.
Sure, sure. So first of all, the 78% basically is a, is an adjusted replacement ratio that takes into consideration that your living expenses would be lower in retirement, right? You may not have the same tax levels and so on, so it's, there are studies that are done, and actually, the report that we had submitted back on May 12th has in an appendix some additional information on the actual study that we've leveraged for that. Uh, but it basically means that you don't really need 100% of your pay pre-retirement to have the same qual, same standard of living during retirement. In essence, that's what, yes. Because you're not paying, you know, the FICA taxes and all of those kinds of things as well. So that's where that 78% number comes in. There are variations of that, I mean, there are advisors who tell you it should be about in the mid-80s versus those who say in the mid-70s. So there's a range, yeah?
And so those, the, this includes social security payments as well, or no?
No, this chart on this page...
So with, with social security, where do those percentages come in and...
Right, so that's what I'm saying, to each of these numbers, if you wanted to determine what social security was worth, I'm sorry, you would add another 24% at age 62.
You would add 24 here, but because this is an example at age 62 and 22, you can't get to the full amounts. So if you go from this chart and add another 24%, that's where you are once you start collecting social security at age 62, with 30 years of service, earning 7% on your defined contribution.
So, so is it, is it, is it fair to say that when this plan was designed, they designed it to accomplish with social security approximately the 78% uh, required for retirement? Well, I'm, I'm just asking, I mean, seeing that all the other jurisdictions have much lower figures, or lower figures, I'm just trying to understand how uh, these plans are, are prepared and, and so that the employee's best interest is accounted for. How did they reach the conclusion that what we're planning for is gonna be sufficient?
You know, the ERFC was designed in 1973. Um, you know, I don't know if those replacement ratio rates went into the consideration of the design at that time. Um, but typically, they would take into account the fact of how much you would be getting from social security at some point in time. In 2001, uh, you had a multiplier of 1.7% in VRS, you had 0.8 in, in ERFC that gave you a 2.5% per year of service, so um, 25 years of service, you would go out at 75% of pay. I think that was really the thinking, that, that, that would be adequate. Uh, and then, social security would be on top of that, so, um, your, your replacement ratios would be, under that design, were quite attractive. under that design, were quite attractive. It was really the hybrid plan that came in after that that caused these replacement ratios to go down significantly. So in answer to your question, yes, replacement ratios are taken into account into defined benefit plan design.
So is it, are you saying that with the federal government, when they redesigned their retirement plan, they said, is that sort of the three-legged stool concept of retirement?
Exactly.
One-third social security, one-third your federal government pension, one-third your own savings?
Personal savings.
Personal savings.
Which is not reflected here, by the way. So, so for example, when you're using the federal government as an example, their contribution requirements are like 4.4%. So if you think about, if they were to, on their own, save the remaining 3.6% compared to the 8% that the FCPS employees is doing, then you'd see a much, you'd see a higher number for the federal government as well. But we have not reflected that here.
Thank you.
Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Schultz.
So if you go to the next page, the page 15, the example of retiree number two.
Yes.
So what, what if any assumptions did you make about what this retiree was doing up to the age of 40?
So, yeah, we have not factored anything in here for that. So it's possible, if you're asking, they might have another retirement benefit or their own personal savings, none of that has been factored in here.
Okay, that is what I was getting at here. Does it only assume social security for those 22 years?
It assumes full career social security.
It, so it assumes social security from the age of like 22 to 62?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's been factored in, but not any other work?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Schultz.
So if we can go back to the other slide. So I just, I want to clarify, because Mr. Wilson was talking about how the federal government's the lowest, but I'm assuming the green is the employee contribution side, correct?
Well, no, it's the total benefits, but it's assuming that the person, that the participant's putting in just 8% of pay for FCPS, minimum required.
So, so what I'm trying to get at is, well, okay, so you've got a total column in the beige section, and you have a total column in the green section.
There is a, so sorry, so you're getting at, yeah, there's additional contributions in the beige section that the employee is putting in, sorry. Are you talking about the green or the beige? Sorry, I'm going to make sure I don't lose.
Well, that's, that's a little bit what I'm trying to get at. I'm assuming that what's in the green is the additional employee contributions.
The green section is the 8%, which is 4% to VRS defined benefit, 1% to VRS defined contribution, and 3% to ERFC. That's the minimum required contribution from the employee. That's the green section.
Right, so that's the employee, so...
Including the employer contributions as well. The beige section is when the employee is contributing 12%. So they're adding another 4% to VRS defined contribution plan. That's the optional portion for the VRS hybrid. So when we said minimum employee and maximum ER, it probably should have said minimum contribution required for the employee versus maximum contribution with the employer match on the beige sections.
Right. I, I will say that this, I've been good up until now, that this is, this, I don't get this slide.
Let me try one more time.
Okay.
So I think, so Susan's absolutely right, that if I just, let me focus on the federal government, or line, that the bottom line. I think if you just focus on the federal government defined contribution columns, right? So in the first column, there's only 4% that the person's getting from a defined contribution, because they're putting in the bare minimum that's required.
Can I, can I try in my, in our earlier vernacular? The green section is the 7% and, the beige section is the 7%, the green section is the 93%?
Yes.
Yes.
No, I think that is right.
Yes, that's correct.
So 93% of our, of our people wind up in the green and 7% wind up in the beige.
Got it.
There you go.
That's, that's correct.
Thank you. That's the, that's the visual. That's the visual. Okay. All right. And we have to move it along because I have children home.
One question. We talk about the seven versus 93%. How does that compare to industry averages on maxing out the ability to, you know, contributions to retirement plans versus just doing the minimum? And I'm...
So, so that, that question is complicated, because in the private sector, contributory defined benefit pension plans are not common at all. It's very rare to have a contributory defined benefit pension plan. Even if you have a pension plan, you don't. So that's why you will see much higher deferrals in a 401K plan because of that, because there's, their participants are not putting any money into a pension plan.
No, but I mean, what percentage actually maxes it out?
Oh, maxed out, maxed out. I, I don't know off the top of my head. I'm sorry, I don't know that stat. But it's probably pretty high. Because, because the most common provision is usually about 50 cents on the dollar for the first 6% matching.
They were still talking, I'm sorry. They were saying, they were asking, did you not indicate that it was 15% across the Commonwealth? And that was really only for VRS. That was comparing educators throughout the, yeah. I think this question was corporate business, corporate environment.
Yes. I think what typically happens is, at least in the corporate environment, the contributions go up significantly as individual salaries go up and their external payments go down.
Absolutely.
Like to continue?
So, sorry, I think it's, we were done, this was, the slide was the last slide? Well, 15 was the last one, where we talked about it as well.
So now we're going to actually flip to the next presentation, and Jean Carr's going to present that piece. And this has to do with the cost of these benefits that we were just reviewing, okay?
We can go to slide two and look at the four items that we did cost out. There are a couple of additional items that Mr. Aladina did not discuss, because they didn't have an impact on the benefits, but they do have an impact on the cost. One is to establish a minimum retirement age of 55 in the ERFC 2001 plan. When I went over the eligibility requirements on May 12th, you may remember that you can retire at any age in ERFC 2001 if you have 30 years of service, or you can retire at age 60 with five years of service. So the first change, option that we outlined was to establish a minimum retirement age in that plan. The second was to change the interest rate that we credit on member accounts. We currently credit a rate of 5%, and the suggestion was to lower that to 4%. We credit this annually for all money that's been in the system for a year. And so I know that portability was raised at the last meeting, so this does give the employee some portability, they're able to leave with the contributions that they put into their account, they're getting a very attractive interest credit rate. I think we would all like to receive a 5% guaranteed rate in this environment. The Fairfax County Retirement System also credits 5%. The Virginia Retirement System credits 4%. A survey of pension plans across the country, it's very common practice to credit interest on accounts. The average rate is 3.86%, so we are a little bit higher than average at the 5% rate. The third option outlined here is the one that Mr. Aladina just went over on changing the final average salary calculation from three years to five years. And then the last one, we also looked at the cost impact of the changes to the Consumer Price Index, the COLA, that we have just discussed, the impact on the benefits. Now, just to remind you, the current COLA in ERFC 2001 is 3%. This COLA change that we've talked about, to tie it to CPI and cap it out at 4%, is the same calculation that exists in the Fairfax County Retirement System. So that's where that calculation comes from. The VRS cost of living increase is also based on the Consumer Price Index, however, they max it out at 3%. And if F3, a member in VRS doesn't have 20 years of service, they do delay the COLA until the member is eligible for a full retirement benefit. We looked at NEA's recent survey on COLAs in teacher retirement plans. 57% do provide either a fixed COLA or a floating rate COLA, so this is very common in teacher retirement plans to have a cost of index. If they do offer a fixed COLA, it's typically the same as we have, 3%. If they tie it to CPI, they typically put a 3% max on it. So we made the same assumptions on the cost of living behavior here that was done on the benefit side for Aon. So looking at if the COLA in the future was 2.3%, and then also second case, assumption B, that the COLA was 1.5%. So you see on slide three, the cost impact, and we've looked at the cost impact with the package of all of these four changes. We do have them available individually in the study that our actuary, Gabriel Roder and Smith, was the one that did these calculations for us. So this slide four is assumption A with the 2.3% moderate COLA. The first, the first year impact that's shown here is a reduction in the employer contribution rate of 0.02%. So not much impact in the first year of the enactment of this change, about $300,000. That is because the changes, for all of these changes except the one, is the interest credit rating was a proposal to apply that to all employees, but this just affects new hires, and so there are very few new hires in the first year. So the effect would flow in gradually over time, and so half of the group would expect to be replaced by these new hires within the first seven years. And so when you see here a short-term change, that's really talking about what you would see in five to 10 years, you would see the contribution rate go down by 0.27%. That would be an annual savings of 3.7 million. And then long-term impact would be greater than 10 years, that would be a reduction in the employer contribution rate of 0.69%, or approximately $9.5 million. Now, note that we show here the current employer contribution rate at 3.32%, and you all know that I just said it was 5.6%. This 3.32% is the cost, additional cost of one year of service for an employee in the system. So if you were starting a new retirement plan, you didn't have any past liabilities, starting at 0.0, you're hiring someone, it would take 3.32% of pay to fund the retirement system for earning one year of service. That's what actually is called normal cost. So we're looking at normal cost here, we're not including the portion that's for the payment or the unfunded liability. So that's what gets you up from the 3.3 up to 5.6%. We are funding that liability, the, that unfunded liability over a 23-year period, and that decreases by one year every year. So eventually, it will get to zero, the unfunded liability. And then slide four shows the impact if we use an assumption that inflation's only going to be 1.5%. More recent experience, it does have a more significant impact on the employer contribution rate. First year change, still about the same, reduction of 0.02% in the contribution rate or $300,000. Five-to-10-year impact, contribution rate down by 0.42%, which is about 5.8 million per year. And then the long-term impact, greater than 10 years, you would see a savings of 14.8 million. And so that's the packet of those four changes. The one that has the greatest bang for the buck is changing the cost of living increase. That's really about 80% of the savings here.
Thank you. Do we have questions?
I'm going to go back to the old questions, and if you tell me that that should be asked in the closed session with the Division Council, I will do that. But that change of CPI, percent, CPI or percentage, while capping it, is that something the board has authority to do, or is that...
That's something the school board has authority to do in the ERFC plan.
With the contractual obligations to the participants?
For new employees? For new employees?
Not new employees, but existing employees. Or is that something to be, should be discussed in the closed session?
Yes.
Closed session.
Do we need to schedule a closed session for this?
I'm not asking for one yet.
Just the last one.
If I can have Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Huff, since Ms., she's been quiet.
Okay, just going back to slide four, just so that I understand the far-right columns. Short-term change in estimated contribution rate, that's savings for the employer, 5.8 million. Again, tell me, short-term change is how many years?
We should see that in five to 10 years.
Five to 10 years.
Depending on how quickly the population turns over.
Right, and this is assuming only for new hires?
Yes.
Yes. Five to 10 years, and long-term, that is more than 10 years, and this would be an annual savings after 10 years.
And assumes that inflation is only 1.5% per year, because remember, it's tied to, so that's a very...
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right. So if this, so if inflation was at 4%, then...
This could actually cost you more, because your current retirees are capping 3.
Right, it's capping 3. Okay, all right, that was, that was what I was trying to, okay. So this assumes a very low inflation rate for a very long time, and who knows? Right? Okay, so if in fact, if, okay, so again, this, this slide is truly based on cost of living. Right? It is the change...
That's the change in the slide from slide three to slide four, right?
Okay, all right. And then dependent on whether or not the CPI would stay that low. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Huff, followed by Ms. Palchak.
So I guess I was just wondering what our next steps, what's the next decision process, what's the next discussion with this information? And that might be a question for the board, really, I guess.
Dr. Garza.
Well, Dr. Garza. As we start to develop the fiscal year 18 budget, these are, these are decisions that you, as a board, would have the ability to make. Because you remember in the previous presentation, to keep everything status quo, we're going to need to add within the, add to the budget 10.9, I think, 10.9 million, 10.8 million to fund the increased cost for the system. So that would be part of the budget development process, is the way I would see it. Would, is that, would you agree with that, Susan?
Okay, so it's for us to bring up for discussion, except for the fact that it wouldn't affect fiscal year 18 as they're presenting it. It's going to affect fiscal year 2022.
That's right, because that's exactly the point. Any changes that you were make, it takes so long to see the benefit from those changes. And I think that's, that's one of the points.
Right, so I guess I don't, maybe it's a discussion we have as a board, and that's what I'm wondering, how do we have that discussion? Because I don't see it directly attached to FY18 per this presentation. And it's really, I guess, I don't know.
I suggest Ms. Hines, please.
Thank you. I guess also, as we talk about compensation, right? Because we have, we're trying to take a little bit of a longer-term look at compensation, making the investment this year and salaries, right? One of the things that we keep talking about is, well, compensation's more than salary. So I guess as we talk about a long-term plan for compensation, maybe this informs that conversation.
Yes, and starting in September, we actually will have a work session every, at least one, every month, just on budget. So we'll talk about finding compensation, overall budget for fiscal year 18, and really beyond. We're going to be looking at our fiscal forecast, which is about a five-year fiscal forecast, so we'll be looking at some of that. I do, if you don't mind my asking a question, because I want to, want us to just put it on the table, because it gets asked often, and I want you all to respond to the question. This is not my personal opinion, but I just want to make sure that we have the question on the table. And that is, what if we did away with ERFC? And that is, what if we did away with ERFC for all new employees? Phased it out? Can you answer that question?
Again, it would not have a, a short-term impact. You have liabilities already sitting out there, employees have already earned the service. You have a contractual obligation to pay that liability off. So that's in the realm of 600 million. So again, it would take this 10-year period before you would see, see those significant, and they would be significantly higher, of course, than the change, modifications we're seeing here.
So if I can suggest Ms. Palchek followed by Ms. Strauss, and then I'm gonna ask a question.
Thank you. I think you said this, but just wanna clarify. If we were not, if we were just to look at the top three, you said that 80% of it came from the CPI, the savings? Is that correct? From changing the CPI?
That's correct. There's not much of a savings from lowering the interest credit rate on accounts, minimum retirement age. It's really, it's the cost of living increases that have the most impact here, even the, the change in the final average salary.
Even that won't have, so even if, so if we were, say, just to go for the first three, long-term is only about $2 to $3 million, and much less short-term? Is that, I just wanna clarify if that's correct.
Yeah, the, the CPI change is a .82% change in the contribution rate, and you add the other three up, and, yeah, it's only about 50.5, you know, so it...
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Strauss, please.
So again, when we're looking at this, and where, you know, some of the interest was, could you shift, it's not that we are saving money in the salary file. It is shifting money from one bucket to another bucket. So it isn't as though any of these changes would be expected to actually save the bottom line. It would be in moving money from one spot to another spot. And what you're telling us is in the first five years, it would be about $300,000 a year, based on this assumption, that could go into upfront salary file as opposed to retirement. Right? So that is the only, that was what, that is what we would gain in additional money into the salary file, and $300,000 is...
And I believe that was the essence of some of the questioning that some, some board members had asked.
Right.
Could we shift some of this money into compensation?
Right. And the answer is very little.
It would take 10 years before we'd have that, approximately. Is that what you said, Jean?
Right, 10 years before we would, right. And, well, it'd be longer than 10 years, so our, our, right, our ability to shift money immediately into the salary file, it's very limited because of liability.
Ms. Evans.
So just to follow up on this line of questioning, you know, if, I, I hear what you said, that you know, not, we, we would not see much of anything for a long time, but at the end of the 10-year period, if we were gonna shift it into compensation, you, you said that would be much higher? Do you have a figure?
Well, the, the employer contribution rate for ERFC is 5.6%. So once you have 100% of your employees in the, that are eliminated from the plan, that, that rate would go away. And you have your liabilities, you're paid off, so you'd have to pay off those liabilities.
Right.
I, I think it was related to the question Dr. Garza had posed. If you were to eliminate it completely, yes, the savings would be greater than what it shows up there at 14.8 million.
Do we have a ballpark figure?
The three point...
It would be the, sorry, go ahead, Jean.
Right, after you paid off all the liabilities, and then the 3.32% is the cost of the ERFC plan.
So each employee you hire, it would be savings of 3.3% of that person's salary.
Okay.
Because this is the cost of, the 3.22% represents the cost of benefits accruing for one year for a new person.
I guess what I'm, I'm trying to get at is a dollar, an annual dollar figure.
Yeah, so let's just do, if you hire somebody at $50,000... You multiply that by point 0332, and let's say we hired 1,000 employees in a year.
You, you can also get this to me later if you...
1.7 million dollars.
The 1.7 million dol, but that's on top of...
Immediately. You would save 1.7 million dollars immedia, because, immediately, because you're eliminating the 3.3% employer costing for each employee.
But if you eliminate the pipeline for funding your fund, it may actually cost you more because your retirement benefits are, and your actuarial basis...
That's correct, that's correct. That's why I think...
Depends on continuing in, so I'm not sure you actually have a savings that way. It would be helpful if you ran the model. I would just be careful throwing that number out there.
Yeah, the, the savings wouldn't accrue that rapidly because you lose your 3% employee contribution from the new employees. You also have to invest your, your fund more conservatively. You know, so, yeah, there, again, would be no savings for a long period of time.
Just wanna let Mr. Moon speak, and I wanna bring, come back to our conversation of two days, or Monday, of what the next steps was, of looking at this as a composite between salaries and benefits. Uh, Dahlia? Okay, if...
Okay, I, I think it is, I mean, this is something very obvious, but just to clarify, and the point Mrs. Strauss was trying to make was, if we did away with the ERFC, not that I'm advocating for, that there may not be cost savings on the part of a school system, but there could be shift of employee contribution amount to employees' paycheck. Is that what you're trying to say?
No, I was gonna say, yes. If, but the, 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 right, and just looking to this plan, there would be a, a very small shift. But you would, then the assumption is that would, that would go into the salary file, it would have almost no effect. If we got rid of ERFC altogether, the problem, the complication is the cost to the employer to continue to keep the overall fund solvent as we continue to pay the fiduciary responsibility to people who are already in the pipeline. So in, for some years, it might actually cost the employer more than what would be saved. And then my next question is, if we got rid of it, so would the new employees receive a higher pay increase in exchange? Would the other employees who are invested in ERFC be, you know, how would you then...
I mean, I mean, that, that's a different question.
Yeah, I know, I know. But no, short-term...
Because general, general argument is from the public at least.
Oh, right, we get rid of it, and we, and we would experience immediate, no, and that's the problem.
At first, you know, they may think that we are saving money, which is not true for the, at least for a while. But, but what they're arguing is, you know, employers can take just higher amount on their, as a net paycheck amount. I mean, that's the, and younger, younger folks need more cash in their pocket right now than in savings account. That's the argument they are making.
Right, and that's...
Not that, not that we agree on that, with that one.
Right, well, and, and, and the problem is, is it is a complex answer, because if you're going to untangle something like this, it is more complicated to untangle than simply somebody agreeing not to set aside money in a, in a savings account. I mean, this is the problem.
So, Mr. Vrain, do you...
Say something. You're good?
Uh, Ms. Huff, please.
Um, so I guess in response to Ms. Strauss, I mean, although I understand that, and we do talk about being forward-thinking, and defined pension plans have been untangled throughout the country for the last many decades. So I, I don't want that to stop our conversation, I, I, but I appreciate Ms. Corbin Sanders mentioning that, as a next step as a board, let's make sure we tie this in thoughtfully to our total compensation conversation. And I'm so sorry to make you guys explain this again, but once we had this other conversation, I got a little confused when we talked about, so the $300,000 is the only part we can actually use towards salaries, what happens to the other 14.8 million in the long-term conversation? And then it jumps at around 5, 5.8 million, and at plus 10, it jumps to about 14.8 million. Okay, thank you.
So we agree to next steps on this? And then I would like to close this session, because I, Mr. Moon has a government session he wants to manage. So next steps. So from the board, the only next step, I believe, is to, in September, we'll be getting a more detailed briefing of, from Dr. Garza on the implications of the, for the budget of the three parts that we've already talked about. So having a composite of all three pieces. Is that correct?
Well, we're gonna continue the compensation conversations, and we are gonna look long-term at our fiscal forecast. So all of these conversations will begin in September with our work sessions, yes.
Great. So thank you all. You guys did an incredible job with a very complex subject matter, so I appreciate it.
So with that, we're gonna take a 30-minute break, and then reconvene at exactly 9 o'clock, and we should be done by 9:30 with your call.